Agenda for a second. Can I use your agenda for a second? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Rockingham Select Board Special Meeting, Monday, January 11th, 2021, 6:05. We're located in the Rockingham Town Hall Lower Theater. And we have a Zoom link for those who wish to attend that way. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Are there any additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and or pressing matters that will require ratification at a future meeting? Anything, Scott?
The only thing, and I know we've talked about this, if we want to talk about options for the town meeting, we are running up on some deadlines here fairly quickly. If we keep our March date, if you wanted to obviously push it out a month, that's certainly within your purview, or for, you know, depending upon how you feel. But I know we talked about the last time, I think, the the warning needs to be finalized by the 28th. And she's got to get her ballots back and everything by the 10th if we're going to make our March date. So at this point, I guess that would be a point of conversation if we wanted to make a decision.
Was it warned already? Number four. Okay, great. Anything else?
Uh, no, those are the only off agenda items.
We need to approve the minutes. Motion's been made and seconded to approve minutes, December 15th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. Are there any public comments on items that are not on the agenda?
I don't see any on Zoom.
Okay. Managers report.
I keep things here relatively light tonight because I know we've got some budget presentation. And we kept Andy here quite a long time the last time. So just a couple of items, we were, we did finalize a submission to the state for the plowing from the Christmas storms. So we will see if we get enough statewide damages and enough. If we hit thresholds, then then hopefully we'll see some money coming back from some of the cost of that. We did have to hire some contractors. We had to spend some money on some road restoration, some gravel. And obviously, we had a lot of equipment in overtime. So that's up being discussed and evaluated. And as that goes through this process, we'll certainly let you know how that comes back. And if we do get a declaration, we'll certainly let you know what might be coming back from the state. That was the only other item.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the agenda. Item number one. Old Bellas Falls Garage Project Update. Elizabeth Bridgewater. Peter Pajee, Wyndham and Windsor Housing Trust. I don't see either of them here tonight.
It's talked last week, and I think they were just going to come on to give you an update as to what they were proposing. We actually spoke on Friday, but I don't see either one here. So I'm not sure if they're having problems signing in. I can just sort of give you a brief discussion or indication of what they wanted to talk about. The proposal that was originally brought forward, it does have quite a bit of CDBG monies and other other sources of funding, has to be modified because they did come up with some additional costs when they went out to bid. The numbers came back substantially higher than budget. So they've done some value engineering, made some changes. The total number of units is only changing by one. I think originally it was proposed at 26 units. It's now being proposed for 27. There's some additional exterior renovation issues. You can see they've started taking the clavberite off the building. They were starting to do some analysis on concrete and some other, you know, preliminary work to make sure that their current numbers are still good. So at some point, they might be coming back to us just to have a update to the CDBG funding, as well as any other discussion about the project itself. So that was basically what they wanted to give you an update on. The project is not stalled. It's basically moving forward. They just had to do a little bit of work to get it to to this point. And then I think they will be back with a formal request to add some additional CDBG funds to help make their budgets.
And Mr. Jeff Dunbar just put in the chat that they had Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust had a meeting this afternoon. I think it said it's gone away. A meeting this afternoon with information that's probably available for those who are interested.
Added information and get it posted on the website as well.
Okay, thank you. Number two, budget. First up is rec. I don't see Ryan here yet. I do see Andy here. We'll go to item two B. If you're ready, Andy. Sorry, and thank you for waiting the other night.
No, no problem. Well, you guys have the paving thing in front of you at all? Do you guys see that?
Okay.
Andy, so maybe we start with that, and then we can sort of fill in the gaps on a few other items as well.
Yep.
Um, the only thing with the paving, most, pretty much all of it's going to be in Saxon River. So we have to let the trustees know out there so they can put money into their budget because they're going to have to adjust all the sewer manholes out there. I mean, other than that's.
Yeah, so basically, this is a continuation of the program that started, I think, in 2019. So and then there was a five-year program to sort of try to get through as much of the roads as possible, get them up to, you know, a new standard. This will bring us and keep us in that third year of that five-year window. I think the thing that's important here is that when you look at the requests, the total cost based on the breakdown, and Andy's gone out and done some fieldwork, and we've done some additional estimating based on what we consider to be what we think the price is going to be on our asphalt is roughly about $100,000 more than what we had typically proposed in budget. So I think you were basically doing 350 a year to meet this number is roughly 450. If we want to continue on that path, we had talked about adding that as a specific item for discussion at the town meeting. Like I said, it'll keep you on track with that five-year plan. And I think it's something that that is obviously beneficial. Just to supplement that discussion, so paving is just one portion. I think the other portion that will continue the program with sidewalks. We've had, I think, a few areas that we have to do some additional work on where we've had to remove trees. I think Andy's also got a couple of locations in the in Saxton's River, I think, that he was looking at that might need some update and replacement. So that current budget, I think we will maintain it at its existing level. I don't think we're going to ask for additional funds for sidewalk work. The third piece of roads, which is, I think, probably the one that we get the most public reaction from is our roads and ditches and culverts. And it's created a little bit of a problem just from a staffing standpoint. You know, we are down a position. So when Andy puts out a crew to do ditches, he needs additional help for flaggers. So if we're going to go forward, we'd like to dedicate a crew for the entire spring and summer just to do ditch work and culvert work. In order to accomplish that, we're either going to have to go out and bid for two flaggers that'll, you know, hopefully be eligible or available for him, or we'll have to look at trying to fill a position of some sort so that he can have that additional manpower to be able to work out in the road. Pretty much that'll take him between the paving, the sidewalks, and the ditch and culvert program. That pretty much takes him through his entire spring and summer. You know, knock on wood that we don't have any more 30-inch snowstorms, so we're not dealing with a whole bunch of additional equipment issues and plowing issues. But that pretty much gives you a status quo program with a little bit of additional monies if we're going to maintain the resurfacing program at the level that we had talked about. So that was one of the things that we wanted to bring to your attention. Andy's been working closely with the regional people on our road, our general road permit and our erosion inventory so that we can start to focus on areas where we would be eligible for for reimbursement if we do additional work. So that survey is almost complete. I think they worked with Andy in the fall, talked to Jeff Nugent recently. He's the person that we've been working through. He's hoping to have that done and then have that updated for us so that we're able then to concentrate on some more specific areas for for restoration and areas that they're concerned about with drainage. So those will be more improvement projects. The other ditch projects, quite frankly, is just trying to get them as, you know, getting them flowing as as well as we can without major modification or changes. So that's really his program for for the spring and the summer for next year. The only other budget impact that might be of a concern there is we've talked about our equipment inventory. Andy had two items on for equipment. One of them is a fairly significant piece of equipment. It does one of the major routes in the town in terms of plowing, and he uses an old 2002 truck for that. So Andy, you want to talk a little bit about that, maybe?
Yep. Well, years past, we used to plow with the grader, and we took the, now we don't. So we cut the position, and now Wally, the mechanic's stepping up, and he's plowing that run, pretty much Brockway Mills, Gas Hills, Lower Bartonsville, Upper Bartonsville, the Cambridge Port Road, all the way out to the town line. And he's doing it with a two-ton pickup because we're not using the grader anymore because we eliminated that position. And the two-ton is a 2002 International. In the summertime, it's our chloride truck. We use it for chloriding. We got a tank that goes in the back for when we're grading. We use that for chloriding the dirt roads.
Why did we eliminate the grader?
Why did we eliminate it?
Yeah, we're not plowing with that anymore.
I don't have anybody. If I put somebody in the grader, then the truck's parked. So it makes, you know, because we've eliminated a position.
But Glenn was the grader operator, no?
No, Scott Bingham is. Glenn took my spot here in Bellas Falls.
No, I just wanted to, we, I don't know what changes you made. That's why.
Yeah, no, there's been a lot of changes.
Obviously, the grader off plowing, that's why I just.
Yep, no, we don't plow with the grader because we cut the, we eliminated a position. So in the summertime, the guy that's in the grader now in the wintertime gets in the dump truck.
Okay, no, I'm just just asking.
Yep.
The other question I got is on this paving budget, you've got some milling costs on another page for about 36.8. Is that in addition to the 450?
Yes, that's an addition.
Okay.
Yep. And there was a, the other thing we could do is we could cut out Oak and Acorn Street if we, you know, it was a possibility to cut those out to cover the milling cost. That was an option. And also, just so you're aware, we're going to do it. We're going to reconstruct the beginning of Hartley Hill, the blacktop section. We're going to dig that down and, you know, put all new material in, along with Hatfield Lane, which is off of Pleasant Street. We're going to reconstruct that as well before we pave. The town will do it.
So on the question, Scott, on the, if we're going to put this in as a item on the town warrant for the town meeting, would we put it down as the 450,000 with 350 to be used on the budget already? So we're actually be only asking for another 100 grand? Just trying to figure out numbers.
Yeah, I think that's a fair number because we can take the milling costs within some of his existing budget. This is just purely, we wanted to give you the paving just strictly on on proposal for roads and location. So that that piece, I think we can absorb within his operating budget, the extra 36. And then, you know, again, he's got materials costs as he works through the summer with ditches and other, you know, gravel, different types of things. But those, I think, we can cover in our general budget. You know, I think our biggest concern is just the level of effort when we go out because we've got to bid, you know, we've got to bid, obviously, we've got to bid the amount of proposed paving, as well as, I think the other thing we have to do is a chip seal contract as well, which we have to put out in the spring as well. So there's just some timing issues about that if we're, you know, taking them forward just so we know quantities.
So so Scott, Andy, what happened to Center Street? That that we, for some reason, already got put off last year and.
Because we added some other stuff on up on Drizzle Drive, and there was this couple of sections on Brockways we added on. That's why we, Everett, before he left, he said scrap that for this year or for this past year. That's why we can put it back on. I would love to see it done.
There was a question. Oak and Acorn are in Saxon River, and the answer is correct. Yes, but just about every street on this list is in Saxon River, isn't it?
Yes, yes. Yep. And I'm thinking we might be able to get a better deal because everything is out there. They won't have to pick up and move several different times.
Nothing in the village here?
No.
Now, if we do some work, it'll just be in the square around the proposed memorial. You know, we had talked about some issues with with that project, but I think that's that's something that, you know, we're still working on those on those final plans to bring those forward. That that should not be a significant amount of money to do some additional curb and a little asphalt work with that. Maybe some sidewalk work if we have to do some extensions.
And then, and another thing, we did not finish Hyde, Bramley, and Topa Pond Roads still are on the list to be paved. That was carried over into from this past year.
Yeah, there was some money set still that'll carry over for that.
Yep. That'll be done before July 1st.
Right, and then we'll close out that project.
Let me ask if I may. I think, not sure where the both of you guys were going with it, but you mentioned about equipment earlier at one point.
Yeah.
And you mentioned the 2002 truck, which you use for chloride in the summer.
Yep.
So you're using it in the winter now, where you, where it was what parked last, parked during the winter before?
Yeah, Wally would use it here and there mainly just to plow lower Bartonsvilles to get across, because, you know, that that truck is such a small truck, you can go across the bridge with it. So that was, that was primarily what that was used for, just to do lower Bartonsville. But now it's being.
So the grader's sitting idle then?
Yep, the grader's.
So let me ask you, because it sounds like you're thinking, like you, the talk is the possibility of a purchase of another truck. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I think we're going to have to look at a couple of options. You know, we did talk about what's out there in the used inventory, and he's done some preliminary work. You know, there's quite a few trucks that come off a lease, but a lot of those are spoken for. So we're going to have to see if we can wedge our way in somewhere and get into a list where we can get a truck off a lease where we might be able to get it at a reduced price.
Right.
Just talking to some of the guys locally, a lot of those are already spoken for. So there's already waiting lists.
When towns trade a truck in, there's a waiting list for, you know, like Town of Chester, they keep their truck for five years, there's a waiting list.
Yeah.
Their trucks are already sold. Even though they're running them right now, they're already gone when they trade them in.
Yeah.
So we're going to do some work and see if we can find some options for that.
Are you looking at it for something that can go over that bridge also? Or how are you looking at it?
Yeah, yeah. Which a six-wheeler, if you load, as long as it's not heavy, you can go, we, you can go across to half-load, you know?
Yep.
Just enough, get through the bridge, go out, do your thing, and come back, you know?
Right, okay.
Yep.
What was on the schedule for next year for the equipment? Wasn't there a truck on there or no?
Yeah, he had a pickup, which was, I think, a crew cab pickup.
No, just a single one-ton.
Oh, was that the single?
Yeah, Ford, it's 2010 Ford one-ton that was going to, it's, yeah, for replacement. And then a 2014 six-wheel international freightliner was scheduled.
So it's basically one truck and one.
And what about this current fiscal year? This current fiscal year, what's on on the list? Has it all been purchased?
Yes, this past year, we bought a.
We get 10, two, two 10-wheelers.
No, just one, a 10-wheeler and a trailer.
The other one. Right?
What's that?
Didn't we wreck the other one?
That was insurance paid. Yeah, that was 2019. That was, yep. And another thing is in the coming year after this year, you're looking at three things to replace, the 2015 freightliner, the 2002 caseloader, and a 2013 pickup. And the, you know, future, the following year, just a heads up.
So depending upon what we look at in budget, obviously, we'll have to, you know, take a hard look at that because that's a substantial amount of money for capital for that, for those three items. So we're just, at the moment, that's on the replacement schedule. We'll have to see as we get closer where we are financially, where the where the equipment is in terms of reliability and cost. And then if it, you know, if there's alternatives, we'll certainly take a look to make sure because that's a pretty heavy hit for one year for the capital.
So I'll ask the question just to get it out on the table for general discussion, but seeing as we're on the highway section here, we're probably down to where we're going to be at to get by. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, my concern is, again, trying to get some of this just routine staffing, seasonal staffing. And we're at a point now, if a guy goes out, I don't have a replacement. He's got every route covered when we have a major storm and the two snow and the two sidewalk plows. But we have no, we don't have anybody else. So when a guy goes out for surgery, which we've had a couple of instances with guys on comp, we don't have any backup. So we're trying to get guys from the village. Sometimes we can get some people, other times they're not so successful. So that's really the concern. And then, once we don't have enough manpower to to cover the routes, now now you're into a catch-up problem. In a smaller storm, we can get by. In a storm like we had around Christmas, once you're behind on a route, you're not catching up, not on a storm like that. So that's, that's one of the challenges with the staffing model that we've got right now. As it, as it is, we might have to go out and ask for contractor bids for March and the rest of the winter, depending upon the surgery dates. And we're going to lose one of our guys for the period. So his route, we might have to put out and see if we can get any any bids, just to see if we can get enough drivers to cover it for the balance of the winter. We'll see what those numbers come back as, see if it makes sense. But that would start in March. Right now, that's scheduled, he's scheduled to be out starting in March.
It'll be a year.
Yeah, it'll be a year for the surgery and the rehab.
And the reason I'm just curious is because right now, it looks like we might be looking at an eight-cent tax increase if I'm not. You've got 205, if you look at the proposed taxes that are on this budget sheet, you're looking at a 2.5 in the general fund and 2.5 in highway rounding the numbers. That's 205,000 on the highway increase and 204,000 dollar increase in general budget. Expenses are down, but the revenue isn't keeping, you know, I mean, we're not, I don't know where we're losing our revenue, I guess. And we're trying to make access. Yeah, jump in, Chan, because I, you and I talked about this once before, but.
So what I'd like to propose, if the board's comfortable with this, is asking them to approve the general and the highway as a level-funded budget and approve the numbers. And then the staff, myself and the manager, will reduce expenses where necessary or do whatever we need to do to ensure that we remain level-funded over last year.
Okay, now, what, I know we've talked about the tax tax sale stuff. We have 50,000 in this budget right now earmarked for that. And you were planning on taking that out, which is fine, but are we going to use, be able to use that for the Depot Street Bridge Reserve? So we can start deciding for that rather than. reserve? So we can start deciding for that rather than borrowing that money at the time.
We have a num, we have a number of things that we can do internally to level fund this and still fund the bridge. So removing the tax sale expense, we would put in estimated revenues for COVID reimbursements. There's a variety of different things, but if the board didn't want to go through line by line and wanted to let the staff decide where to allocate funds to, if you wanted to approve a level funded budget, we could just go, go forward from there because as far as a motion and accepting the budget, it's just the, you know, the amount that we're gonna collect from taxes and total expenses.
Well, maybe Shannon, one way to put that is if we do take that fifty thousand, if you want to dedicate that towards a bridge reserve, maybe that's sort of where Peter's trying to get to.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, you have to bring it going in, what, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, I think it is.
Yeah, the last thing we looked at, our share at five percent is roughly a hundred and seventy-two thousand on the last, on the last correspondence.
Now, in the next couple of years, we're almost there and we don't have to borrow when it comes time to.
Right. Yeah. So I mean, it's prudent. It makes sense to start that process.
Yeah. And what about the fund balance, Shannon? Any, any, I assume you're probably gonna take that into account when you get around to it, but I, I hate to keep robbing that thing all the time turn around.
Yeah, while Ryan speaks to his budget, so we don't keep him on here, I will get those figures and then I'll have them for after the rec discussion.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see when you get done with what you're, if we decide to have the staff do the, do the, come up with a budget and stuff rather than go line by line up we're normally used to, we're used to doing. Like to see what the tax impact is gonna be before we adopt the budget for town meeting. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
I would feel comfortable, knowing that ahead of time, yeah.
Well, I guess maybe, so we are still talking operating budget. Do you guys have anything else for Andy or we can? I mean, that's pretty much the program.
Not for Andy, but for Shannon. Yeah, just for Shannon regarding the, the thousand, a hundred thousand that we're looking for, for the paving, is that something that would be able to come out of the fund balance? I mean, I, I don't know where that stands for highway right now. I mean, I wouldn't want to lower it from where we are at this point, which is like
Yeah, so my thought process behind the paving was to leave the three fifty for which we've been doing in the budget and create an article for the additional hundred thousand and have the residents vote at town meeting on the additional hundred thousand.
Right. But is that additional hundred that will be taxed or is there money in the fund balance that we would be asking them to move over into paving?
So we can write the article either way. There is substantial money in both the general and the highway fund balance. And I'll, I'll give you those figures momentarily.
Okay. Only because they did vote to put in that money for last year, a hundred and fifteen. So I, I don't know where that was used. And if that's available, I would say that would roll into the paving budget.
Yeah, yeah. So you're, oh, sorry. So Susan, I just want to make sure we're on the same page. So the money that they put in for the public works director, so for the additional hundred thousand for the paving, we would just move over from the highway general fund.
Right, yeah, I know. But I'm just saying there is money there.
Oh, there's
As opposed to adding two cents to the tax.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
So are you saying now that we could direct staff to level fund and not include this hundred thousand dollar article? Is that what you just said?
We'd have to level fund with a transfer from fund balance, but yes, that could be done.
And in, in this discussion, it's kind of separate. Well, first, let, anyone have anything else for Andy? No, right?
No.
Thank you very much, Andy.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you, Andy.
Thanks, Andy.
Now, just back to that topic real quick. And before we move on from highway, I, all I can see is a little red thing when someone types. So in a minute, I'll give the public a chance if they have any questions for, for highway, what we've discussed so far, because I can't read what you type. But I wanna at some point talk about including economic development position to full time in, in this level funded budget without an additional one hundred thousand dollar article for, for additional paving.
So we have seven hundred and seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in our highway fund balance at the end of FY twenty. And so anything that we save this fiscal year because we will be under budget, will just increase that fund balance. We so we have plenty of money in the highway fund balance.
Okay, and it's the I, I'm in favor of full time for Mr. Fox. I don't, would, would we have to have a discussion or vote on that? And that would be, be included in your proposal of level funded?
So in our proposal of level funded for the general fund, that would bring the development director full time.
Because we saw, we kind of saw in detail at the joint board what we will benefit in, in addition to the added hours for him to do his job.
Yeah. And we have four fifty in the general fund balance at the end of FY twenty. And again, we will be contributing to fund balance because we are projected to come in well under budget for general fund this year too. But level funding the general fund, we would be allocating funds to bring the development director on full time.
What's the percentage that they recommend that we should be having in the fund balance? I just like to make sure we're not gonna, you know, infringe on that.
Sure. So the recommendation, depending on whom you speak to, is anywhere from fourteen to twenty-five percent of an annual, of your annual expenses. So when you look at highway, you don't want fourteen to twenty-five percent of any projects or paving or anything like that. It's just the necessary functions as the highway. And I have those figures too.
Six hundred and something.
Thank you. You know what the projected estimate to be adding to the fund balance might be? I know it's probably, well, maybe it's early, only six months in.
Yeah, it's early.
Susan, you have any other, oh, sorry.
Um, just a question again on, well, going back to the, the general fund, are we in that?
Not, not, not quite.
Not yet. Okay.
Not quite, not quite.
Yeah.
Gary, so I was, I didn't know if we were talking about anything else.
We, it was just the over, overview of the highway and general level funding directing the staff.
Right.
I wanna see if, yep.
Well, no, then the only other thing is, yeah, I can, I, I, I support Gary going full time. The exec, executive assistant position, is that in the budget as full or part time? I, I just don't see it possible as a part time position, finding someone to fill that position part time.
Yeah, we, the manager and I have been discussing it and I think Scott's thoughts are that we will have a hard time finding somebody part time. So to either use someone who is currently part time and add hours to their schedule and or share the position, but bring it on as a full time. And like I said, accepting level funding for the budget, we could as management move things around to accommodate. But just to get back to you guys, so the highway fund balance, you would want to do approximately six hundred thousand. So you'd want fifteen percent would be three hundred and sixty thousand and twenty-five percent would be six hundred thousand. Or, or I'm sorry, twenty-five percent would be six hundred thousand that you want in your fund balance if you wanted six hundred thousand in there. For highway, that's not advised. If something were to happen, we'd be eligible for FEMA or things of that nature for the highway.
All right. But even taking that hundred thousand out of the seven twenty-five, we're good. And that doesn't include what's gonna be coming in from this fiscal year we're currently in.
That's correct. And then for general fund.
It also doesn't include the article from last year, right?
That's correct.
I thought it was one thirty, not one fifteen.
One nineteen-five is what.
One nineteen-five. So that also doesn't include that, Susan. Highway fund right now, the number she gave us.
Yes, I know. Yeah.
Okay.
And then general fund, if we were to have fifteen percent in the fund balance, it would be four hundred and twenty thousand. If we were to have twenty-five percent, it would be seven hundred thousand.
Anything else from the board on highway? Anyone, any public questions could ask them now. I can't see anything you've typed. Unless Shannon thinks we've answered them. I can't see the
Deb had asked if Oak and Acorn and Saxon's River were scheduled on the paving, but I think you answered her. She said, thank you.
That's Saxon's River, all those, that's the Oak and Oak Street and Saxon's River. Yes.
And then I don't see anybody else asking questions or raising their hand currently.
Great. We'll hear from Ryan if you're ready.
I'm ready.
You're up. Ohio State by fourteen.
Hey, nasty.
I like that a lot.
Come on, that's gonna be good. We gotta
All right, Ryan, you're, you're on. No, no pressure.
No pressure.
What happened to Steelers yesterday?
Do you have any discussion? You want to run us through anything, Ryan?
No, I mean, it's a it's basically the same thing as it has been the last few years. So no big changes and just the same type of budget I've been, we've been presenting the last few years. So.
Do you see any savings with the or offset from revenue to savings with staff and closing time? Or how's that looking for you?
Um, we'll have a lot of savings this year of staff because we didn't do a lot of programming. So a lot of hours, a lot less hours this past year, but hopefully we're, we'll be back to normal for next year. So.
Where will that affect your revenue though? The, you know, less staff, less programs? Have you figured that out?
For this year or next year?
Next year.
Spring and summer, Brian, is really what.
I'm, I'm hoping to have, be open all, all spring. So I think we'll be fine there. So we'll be able to do our programming, continue our program for the spring and then go roll right into summer. So I think, and as long as I believe we'll have lots of restrictions for next summer, I would believe, I'm hoping. But if we have the semi same of like programs we gotta run through the state, we probably won't be able to run our day camp that we make a lot of money through and provides a lot of staff hours. So that would affect that again next year, but that would be the only really thing that would be affected would be my summertime camp.
Well, Ryan, maybe just to give a sense of timing. So I'm assuming that, you know, the state keeps giving us updates, but nobody's really giving any solid dates in terms of when we're moving into the next phase, you know, of, of the current declaration. So if we're still in this phase by May first, what does that do to your summer programming in terms of your staff and then what you can do for signups and offerings? So maybe we'll just start there and then we can work our way from there.
And that's, in essence, it's, I mean, we'll be, be able to do kind of what we did this past summer. And it's all, it all depends on what I'm able to do. Right now, we can, we can hold so many things outside. I mean, it's not, only the, the biggest thing is, is it'll affect our day camp really. Because I believe we would be able to have, as of right now, we can do clinics or outdoors, we can do, you know, we can do the drive-ins, we can, the swimming pool will be able to stay open. The biggest thing is just not having our day camp really as of right now.
So from a, a timing standpoint, when is the, the latest that you can go with the, you know, the program that you would say we'd have a normal program and the latest you'd go where we say, well, we can't do it going forward, that it's too late. Is that June first? Just to give the board a sense of when, when this thing might be, if we have to give an update in terms of, you know, where, where we're gonna be offering programming.
Um, I usually tried to put all my programming in by the middle of May and get that out. So I would say by then. That's why I try to get all my information. I can get a good sense of where we will be by then. By talking to other rec directors throughout the state, we have a we have a email link that we talk to each other on constantly. And there's a couple of people that really bend the ear of the state people up there and kind of know what's really going on, what to expect, you know, within, before it's really released. So we kind of get a little jumpstart there. But I would say so May would be the earliest I would be, or the latest I would be able to express anything going on. And then we could be able to roll with anything that gets modified throughout the summer.
Okay. So, you know, we'll anticipate a normal opening for facilities, a normal programming. And then if it's not, then we'll come back by May and let, and just give an update as to what the status is and where things are gonna go. It might be pushed out to July. It's just hard to tell at this point. Nobody's giving us really good target dates, I guess, is the right word for the future. So we're sort of rolling, you know, in two or three week increments here at the moment.
Yeah, and when they usually give you, it's usually last minute and, and it can be vague. So you have to really shoot from the hip and and it's just like the same thing with schools right now. It's just, you know, it's, it's week to week. But I think we'll know more by April, I would say, especially now since vaccines are getting out. I think they'll have more of a, a plan of how to, how they're gonna treat summer, I believe, through the state, since they already went through it once.
Facilities wise, Ryan, are there anything that the trustee, that the board needs to be aware of for any capital work or any other kinds of repairs or updates that we need to do prior to the spring or summer?
Next, I talked to Andy at the end of the fall, beginning of winter. We're gonna probably look into redoing the other half of the swimming pool water lines there. It's it's not gonna be super expensive. It will be, it should be, we should be okay budget wise. Couple of having the guys do it in town. They have a couple of guys, I think, still on board that did it last time. And it's not as extensive as the last one. It's a, it's only gonna be, I think, a few. Is this gonna be about, it's gonna be cutting the other half, but I say the other half, but it's really only about probably a third. They already did two thirds of the replacement of the other stuff. So that's the only big thing that needs to be looked at because they're starting to lose water. And I think may, it started losing a little bit of water last year, but not bad where I would have to refill every three to four days. Not like it was in the past where I had to fill it daily. But so I just want to get, get to it before it does become a big problem.
Okay. But other things, filters or major stuff, the lights are all in good shape. There's no other major updates that we need to bring the board along with. So.
No, the building's good. The heater's good now. Got, that got fixed and it's been replaced. The new pump's helping out up here, keeping the propane off and as much as possible and looking up, good up here. Skeet toe is all set now. The rope got respliced and runs pretty good and ice rink is ready to go tomorrow. ice rink is ready to go tomorrow and but, oh, actually, that might be one thing. I got to repair the ice rink for next year. When I got vandalized there a couple of weeks ago, a few holes got punched, punched into it. So I patched it up as best I can as it was sitting there. But I did order a bunch of tape to try to repair it for, before I stored it for the summer.
Okay.
But those, if I have to get another, a new one of those, those usually are not as bad. I've had it for, I believe, eight years. I believe I paid around two thousand dollars for it, but they're not that expensive anymore. So.
Well, we're targeting March to, to sort of review where we stand with COVID protocols for things like the Opera House and how we're going to try to do some stuff for programming for that. And I imagine we'll do an update at the same time for recreation. And then depending upon where we stand, we'll have to probably go monthly and see where we are in April and see again where we are in May. So unfortunately, we just don't have real good, solid targets to point to and program to. So I guess we'll just have to be as flexible as we can. You'll have to main, you know, if we do get the green light, you'll, you'll have to ramp up and, and program and get materials and, and staff fairly quickly. That's going to sort of have to be the, you know, the way this is going to operate.
One hundred percent. I should be good.
Okay.
I don't have anything else. Anything?
No, we're good.
Susan?
All set. Thanks.
Peter?
Nope.
Thank you, Ryan.
All right. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ryan.
Good luck. All right. We want to come back to the general fund. Do you want? Is that, are people interested in a, a motion of sorts that, uh,
I guess.
To level fund with the things we've talked about?
When Shannon comes back, did she give you the current general fund, fund balance?
Yes, she did.
She did. Okay. I wasn't sure that everybody got that. Okay.
Current, and then we have the, the things that are, should carry over for
Yes.
For both, plus the savings.
Yes.
It seemed simple to me to just suggest what we we direct staff to level fund with the additions and wait for it to come back and then we could possibly approve it rather than having four more of these meetings and asking three hundred questions.
Do we need, I don't think we need a, a motion, just a consensus of board to let them.
I would like.
Give us a sensitive direction. We'll go from there.
I would like to see that happen. Stefan?
Yeah.
Stefan, like.
That alleviates the, uh, some of that eight, eight cents there.
Susan?
Yep, that's fine. And when do we have to make the final, um, budget approval or that's what we're?
Depending on number four might determine that, really.
Okay.
Yeah.
The way I see it, I don't know.
If you keep March the third, if you keep the current date.
Yep.
Yeah.
So what I would propose is that we come to you with our changes in a level funded budget for your next select board meeting. You could make a motion and, um, approve all the articles and we could be done, uh, well, it's next Tuesday, actually. And then depending on what you're doing, either way, regardless, we would be prepared for March or April.
Okay. Mike, moving that to the other Tuesday, January, um, Tuesday, because that's only eight days away. Would that be more helpful for you guys and, and still leave us time?
That is the other January.
Yeah, that's it.
Oh.
Yeah, we're out of time. If that's the case, we would, I would suggest we go to April.
Well, I mean, think about the time you need because we have not had a special meeting for budget season this year, which we typically used to meet Saturdays consistently. So we always could, if you guys need the time. Like, I don't think we're in a rush to get it done by the nineteenth. Does anyone else?
We will be, we are in a position to have it and be prepared to present it to you on, on the nineteenth, if you'd like.
Sounds, sounds great. Thank you. Anything else? Moving along to item three. I just wanted we did this, but.
Yeah, we, we need to ratify Kelly Tully as the, uh, energy.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I would mo, 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 yeah, I would move that we would ratify, uh, the motion made at the last meeting to appoint Kelly Tully to the conservation committee, uh, the energy portion only as requested.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded to ratify the vote to appoint Kelly Tully, uh, Energy Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Number four. Decide whether to hold a town meeting in March or April. Really quite follow this one because, Peter, you go ahead. Was it Warren? Was it in the newspaper?
There were two articles. One was a press, I, I guess, a news article in there that named the dates of March first and, uh, as the, uh, town meeting day and the voting day to follow. And then there's an ad in the shopper. Minus a warning. There's no warning been issued in either one of them. So I, I think it may have been just in there for information only that people have the deadlines to get their consent forms or whatever. They don't need petitions this year to run for office. Uh, so, um, but I think the petition that rumored to be out there for the library, I think that has to be on a certain date, but the rest of it, uh, they don't, unless that's also been waived. I, I, I'm not sure. I didn't see anything about that.
There's supposed to be a meeting to potentially update the town meeting statewide, you know, the parameters up in Montpelier today. Um, or tomorrow, rather. And then I don't believe there's anything on there that would, would necessarily create any major changes. It's more, you know, the Australian ballot.
When, so besides the date, at what point uh, do we have discussion or make a decision on, uh, Australian ballot?
We should do that as soon as possible.
That, that would also, I mean, you guys could make all of your decisions next week for, um, the town meeting, the Australian ballot, the budget. We could present all of the motions for you at one meeting.
And then it would have to be warned accordingly.
So, right, let's discuss it for a minute. Can we, or you want to just wait till then?
No.
Discuss and get it on table now.
I'm very much in favor of Australian ballot. That's that's my opinion. I don't, and I'm also in favor of the March meeting. That's my.
Same here. I like the March meeting. Uh, the only thing is with the ballot, which I'm not saying I have an issue with that. I'm just saying in the event it goes or fails, we'll have to come back.
Well, that's.
I don't have any issues. I'm just saying that's so people are aware of that.
Yep. I think you'll get a yeah, go ahead.
Would there be some kind of Zoom meeting for the, for the, um, for the town meet?
Absolutely.
How would that work? Yeah.
Absolutely. And we already have it set up and we're reviewing it to make sure that it's legal, but we already have the ID, the times, everything set up. The only thing that would change is if you guys move from March to April, but we want to be prepared in the event you choose to do it earlier. But yes, there will be a Zoom meeting.
And, and I guess my understanding is we also, as part of the Australian ballot process, have to have an informational hearing. So the select board would have ten days prior to the actual town meeting. And really that's just an opportunity for people to come and discuss articles and get information, uh, prior to the actual town meeting date. So.
That's in Act one sixty-two. You found this?
That is in this seventeen VSA. I'm looking at section, I think it's two eighty or twenty-six eighty, excuse me. Yeah.
Uh, your microphone is so fuzzy.
I'm sorry. I probably need to put my masked mouth closer.
Peter, any comments?
No, I think you need to pull it away.
Oh, I'm sorry. There you go.
Don't give us any ideas.
Better.
Thank you. I could put it all the other side of the room if that would help. So. So yeah, that would be the only other requirement.
So you're, what you just said was that we would have two meetings, a town meeting and then, uh, on the Monday before the vote and an informational meeting ten days before then. Doesn't make any sense.
Well, that was part of the requirement.
Oh, I think the informational meeting is, is on the articles is before the town meeting.
Correct.
Yeah, but the town meeting, uh, is, you don't, you're not doing any votes, but that's generally the informational meeting is town meeting.
Yeah.
Where you discuss all your articles. And I agree with you. The only, only problem I have with Australian ballot voting is that if it's voted down, if the budget doesn't vote down, uh, gets voted down, they come back and
Right.
you got to redo everything again. And, and, and then it's, it's, it's just a, a cost of redoing the, the voting stuff.
Yeah.
I know several years ago, the school did that and we had three votes on it. They never changed the budget. They just kept throwing the same number at people and finally they just got frustrated and they didn't vote it in anyway.
Yeah.
So, um, I don't know. Uh, doesn't make a difference to me. It's just, uh, that's the only caveat I have against, uh, Australian voting.
But I think if we, we hit taxpayers with a level funded budget, I, I think chances of that are probably pretty slim.
I agree.
But.
I think there's other stuff that, that so, so anyways, I think, uh, I'm in favor of it. And I think there's, you'll get a a bigger turnout of sorts to folks who.
Well, the village tried that and they didn't get a bigger turnout. So.
That's the village.
Well, I'm just saying.
But, um, you know, if that happens, then we, then we go back to work. I mean, it happened in the village a few years ago, but it's, that's, you know, I think that's part of the deal. So we don't have to make that.
And I don't think we can ask people to come to town meeting under COVID and, and vote, um.
I don't think that's fair. Yeah. A lot of people.
It's not there. And unless you could do it via Zoom, which you can't, um, I think.
Lost your mic. So. Damn it.
I said, if, you can't do it via Zoom, a vote, so you have to do it this way. And I don't think we can bring people into town. Uh, people won't show up. There'll be even smaller number of people who show up than normal.
I agree. So we're, we're, we're good on that. We can finalize all of that on, on the nineteenth.
We'll finalize the articles on the nineteenth. And then the warning will have to be done by the clarify the twenty-eighth and posted. And then the other thing we'll have to do is the information. Which we'll have to pick a date for that sometime in late February.
So we're going to have an actual warning to, to look at on the nineteenth?
Yes.
To approve.
Sample morning or sample art?
I think we'll have the art, yeah, we'll have them prepared as a, at least the language.
Okay.
Okay. Number five. Town clerk review of due dates.
Which is basically what you just went through.
That's the thing we were just talking about when we have to have stuff done. What about the town report? Where's, uh, where do we stand on that? Is that, that, that has to be available out? I think it has to be available ten days before voting.
Yeah, so we'll have to have that.
I'm on it. I'm already constructing it. I have all the department heads reports, um, and then the budget obviously goes in, but I am in process of completing that and I have, uh, dates from the printer. So that is in motion.
And we can get that, Shannon, before the February informational meeting. So I think we're, we're good on time.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I did it last year, so this year should go a bit smoother.
Yep. Okay. So then town hall update. Number six.
Yeah, so we have a couple of items that, um, we did receive, um.
Scott, your mic is awful.
You want this one?
Let me put it, is it better the farther away it goes?
That, yeah, and don't touch it.
All right, I'll leave it alone. It's just normally what you can't hear.
No, I, thank you.
I'll, I'll, I'll try not to overwhelm the mic. So we have a couple of items, um, that we're finalizing. If you remember, you had approved previously a windows project that we were working on for the, we had done, um, one floor of windows. We have the second floor, which we needed to complete. Working with the contractor on some dates and costs for that. We do have some money that was already budgeted for that. So that's underway. I'm hoping that if the weather cooperates, that that could start early in the spring. So we could have that work done before the, the heat of the summer and get those windows and sashes and everything updated. The roof, we do have some money that came in.
I have a question about that. If, is anyone aware? So we, we paid someone time a lot of time and material to make temporary sashes when we did, uh, when the second floor was done. Do we hopefully save those sashes and will they indeed, in fact, work in the next phase?
I don't know if the ones that were previously constructed were worked or we're just going to do something with some temporary. Quite frankly, just some plywood, you know, just sort of.
Maybe just check into that because he, he, he like, um, a lot of work went into the temporary ones.
Yeah, I will find out what the status of those is. We did talk about it. I don't know if they're still available, but I will find it out. On the roof itself, we have a meeting scheduled, um, trying to finalize with Chuck and myself and, uh, a couple of other pieces of information about the flat roof. And then I will get back to you with a final proposal on what we can afford to do and what we recommend to do based on the primary floor somewhere. We did get some, uh, money reimbursement back. So we're looking at using some of that money to help do this roof project. And I'm hoping that we can get enough, um, area covered that the, the, some of the, the most of the reimbursement can cover the, the membrane that we're trying to fix.
Last time I, this discussion came up, when I was on this board, um, Gary was here and I went in her office and she got me all the all the numbers and uh, work orders of locations of the sections that had been done. So hopefully you guys have all that because.
I do, but I also have proposals from twenty nineteen and twenty twenty that were not done.
Yeah.
Only small.
So it's just quite a bit had been replaced when the discussion came up the last time.
Right.
Just hope we have that information for your guys' work.
Yeah, so we will finalize what, what is the actual scope. So I will have that for you.
Okay.
The next time we meet.
Thank you.
And then Chuck is still working on, on the, uh, numbers for the clock face and the lighting in the tower. We have some preliminary numbers. I'm hoping that when we have the roof numbers, we'll have his numbers as well. So he can present that to you as a conference. So that is coming.
Any questions? Did they get more dim the lights in the tower?
Yeah, the one facing looks a little dimmer. I don't know why.
I don't know. Something got knocked over. I haven't seen it myself, but if it was of the description I read where one white paint reflection. I wonder if everything's aiming in the right direction.
Yeah, Chuck was up there last. I'll have to ask him.
Send him up about five of eleven.
So he gets a nice eleven dings in there? Yeah, make sure. He has ear, he has earmuffs now. So I think he's learned.
Any questions on that, Susan?
Nope, all set.
Okay, so we need to review agenda items for next meeting, which we've covered quite a bit of unless anything else additionally comes up.
I will also, um, I was due financials to you, but because of audit and budget and all of that, I'm presenting them to you in the second, uh, meeting of the month. So I also have finance.
At that meeting?
Correct, yes.
I mean, I could even wait personally if we have, we'll have other stuff to do.
If you can wait, that's great, but if anyone would like to. If you can wait, that's great. But if anyone would like to see them, I, I will make that happen.
Okay.
Then your other item that I'll have is I'll have a, um, Better Places grant application for the memorial park. For lighting improvements. Um, that grant application is due by the 22nd. So I wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity to look at it. Have any questions or concerns? You know, we're working with a host of people on those improvements at the, at the memorial. Some design elements and some final decisions. And so we can start some of the process. This potentially would be a $10,000 or $12,000 grant just to buy the lighting. We're working with quite a few donated contractors to help us with install and some other things, but this will buy. Lighting so we can light the new tree as well as lighting for the flag and then some pedestrian level baller type of lighting. Kind of like what you saw at the, at the credit union. People seem to like that sort of view, that look. So we're trying to sort of reproduce that. So that'll help us move towards that. So that'll be on, that'll be a third of your information. I might need a letter of recommendation as well for that. For the 19th.
There's also a variety of liquor licenses to be approved. So I will send those through in advance, but there is a number of them.
Okay. Thank you. And then anything else that comes up, we'll, we'll get it on there. Uh, we need to review agenda items for the next joint board meeting, which we're not, we don't have a date right now. Anything, um, write something down if it. It's on your mind for that next joint board meeting. Need to review and approve orders, bills and warrants.
Some move.
Second.
Much been made and seconded to, uh, review, approve orders, bills and warrants. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Passes. Other business, Susan.
Um, just a question, maybe you, someone knows the answer. Um, is there, has there been a rabies clinic scheduled? Cause it's going to get to that time where we have to do the dog registrations. Does anyone, was anyone, Kathleen started on that? Do we know?
I do not know. I think, um. Shannon says she's going to check with chief Guinness and then we could probably Scott can also help find out.
I mean, I can get that answer next week. I don't need it. I don't need the answer right now. Just, um, people have to start thinking about that. Time ticks away.
Town clerk, yeah.
Town clerk, I think because of COVID, that was. Get a bump in the road last year. So I would imagine we're at the same bump in the road this year.
Other towns have scheduled theirs. So.
Okay. Did it not happen last year? It was scheduled to and then got canceled, right? At the firehouse? We're going to do a walkthrough thing and then it never happened?
I think, I don't recall, but I.
You're frozen.
I believe so.
Yeah. Okay. Stefan?
I, I think it, I think it hap, I, I don't remember. I don't remember.
At this time, we do not currently have a rabies clinic scheduled. So, so I will, uh, group everyone together and get that going, Susan. Thank you.
All right. Stefan?
No, we're good at this time.
Peter?
Yeah, there's, uh, the storefront up here. I noticed like it must be the window must've got broken or something there.
Yeah, we had a vandalism event. So the insurance company's been notified. Yeah.
And nothing for me, except thank everyone for all their hard work once again.
Gaetano, real quick. There are multiple deliveries of masks. So if anybody needs them, fire station, police station or town hall, we have received another batch of them.
Masks.
Face masks.
Glove mask. Okay.
Yep.
Where? Here in the fire station?
Town hall, uh, Bellas Falls Fire Station and Bellas Falls Police.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, no executive session. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night. Thank you.
Night.